Wait, that printout I gave you is history.
I did not. Oh, come on, where did it?
All right, I'll go ahead and call the Tarragon City Council Budget Workshop for Tuesday, August 6, 2024 to order. The time is 5:08. First item is discussion items. I've made proposed tax rates and revenues.
Yes, you did. You were made. No.
We started. Can we catch my breath?
All right. So we've done expenditures, and now, as you remember, budget process is always backwards because we don't know revenues until almost the last minute. So we got the revenue numbers back last week, technically the week before, but they was coming at like 5 o'clock on Friday. So it's been a week full of Susan doing crunching and running up some numbers. So we'll turn to page two, Budget Workshop. Proposed Tax Rate and Revenues is what we're going to cover today. Next page is the fiscal year 2025 proposed tax rate. Okay, few things to highlight. Our goal, I know our five-year goal that council set out for us to achieve, was to try to get below a dollar within the first five years. We were thinking and hoping that we might be able to do that in four years, but after getting tax numbers back, changing around some debt service, it's just not looking like we're going to get there this year. But do have increased confidence that we'll still be able to meet that goal next year, getting us below a dollar next year. Just some things that we've got to continue to work on this fiscal year to get there. Even with this proposed tax rate that's here, there's still some budget cuts that we had to make from the expenditure budget, which, this is a revenue meeting, so I don't want to get too far into expenditures. We can talk a little bit about that, but I think at the end, we need to decide if council wants to have one last workshop on budget, which we can do next week prior to our regular meeting. So that way, we're not adding another calendar date there. We can do another workshop next week to review any changes in the budget before we move forward on proposing an adopted tax rate budget. But that'd be up to you guys. So the tax rate calculation, so the property tax rate, our recommendation is for the city to adopt a tax rate of 1.026080, which is the voter approval tax rate. Although, well, it's the voter approval tax rate plus the unused increment raise.
That is below that.
Yeah. Let me have you explain the tax rate a little better than I.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
The voter approval rate plus the unused increment, and I have some terms in here that kind of go over what all that is, so you can understand a little bit. But that rate actually came in higher than our tax rate of last year. And so I knew that we didn't want to go, we didn't want to go in the other direction. So although we didn't reduce our tax rate, I was able to reduce it by one cent, but we didn't go as high as we could have gone, is what I'm trying to say.
The no new revenue rate would have been 99 cents. And again, no new revenue, meaning that we would not incur any additional revenue the prior year. With this adopted tax rate, potential increase from property taxes is $173,199. Again, the language will read that this is a property tax increase because we are increasing the revenue that the city will be bringing in.
Are you still on the same page?
Yes, ma'am. Property tax rate comparison. If you look down at the bottom of that first row, potential increase over PY prior year, 173,199.
That's it?
Yes, ma'am. Now, you know why we're cutting things out, but... So that's going to be our staff recommendation of adopting a tax rate of $1.26080. If there's any heartburn about that, then I suggest we talk about that now before we go into revenues because if you decide to change that, we are going to have to go back to the drawing board on a lot of things, so.
Go back to the drawing board?
On a lot of things.
On a lot of expectations.
I just didn't hear what he said, yeah, okay.
So now would be a good time to talk about that tax rate.
Because we've trimmed as much as we possibly can.
And you said we could actually, could have gone up another...
Oh, yeah, we could have gone to $1.489 on this, but we weren't going to go the opposite direction. Not our goal.
How much additional would that have brought in?
Not a lot more, obviously. Even the...
Put it around $2,000 mark, 773.
Important, a couple of important things to highlight because they impact revenues, so I want to make sure we stay relevant to the agenda item here. Tarrant County Appraisal District has changed their process, and that's, we're still kind of a little unclear on how much that's going to impact us. But they approved, well, they have approved a motion to direct the director to make this change, and they're voting on this on Friday. But they are going to change the appraisal period. Instead of appraising properties every year, they are going to appraise properties every two years. That does not include new construction, and it does not include any permitted renovations that may have occurred. So we'll still see changes there. They are also creating some interesting language. Currently, the state has a cap, a 10% cap on appraisal value increases. They are creating interesting languages that drop that cap to 5%, and they're calling it a threshold. They're not calling it a cap. I love the opinion, and I don't mind going on record saying this, I don't care what you call it, it's the same thing, and I think it's illegal. But they're calling it a threshold.
They told us it wasn't. Why do you think it's illegal?
Because the state controls that. Those increases are 10% based on state. State controls how that's increased, not local appraisal. And I think, I don't want to speak, I don't want to make any judgments, but I just don't think that's legal for them to do. And I'm not the only one of that opinion.
So the state controls the annual...
Percentage cap, correct. You know, the state sets the cap. Seems like TAD has come in to move to make sure that that increase is, or that cap is lower. Now, they do say, they have said that they will go above the 5% if they have documented reasoning and sufficient evidence to go above that 5%. But there's general direction is to not move above that.
So how do we get them to do what the state wants them, expects them to do as by law?
Well, we're going to get into politics. It's not my realm. That's your realm, so I have to be very, I have to be very careful in my position.
Don't give me your opinion. Give, so tell me what you think is the best course of action to address this.
The only thing I can tell you as a city manager is that the board appointees are elected by city councils. You cast the votes for those positions, and they're controlled by you. They were added positions this last year that have made some changes there. I think their purpose is to provide property tax relief, which personally I agree with and support. I know that our residents need property tax relief. My concern with this method is that I think what's going to happen is, because appraisal, there won't be appraisals in 2025, there will not be appraisals in 2026. Their next appraisal period will be 2027, according to the policy.
Still an idea.
So, yes. So what will happen is, I think essentially, we'll see somewhat of a freeze or a level. And then suddenly, when they come out and do reappraisals, we're going to see a big spike. I think that's going to cause some difficulty for us and challenges for us because we're going to see flat revenue as far as property taxes over the next two years. And I think it's also going to cause some impacts, unforeseen impacts for the homeowner who's going to see a level tax bill for two years in a row, and then suddenly get hit with a much larger increase than what they normally would have gotten because...
Was they not considered that?
I don't know.
I know that's a stupid question, but we're talking politics.
Again, I have to stay in my lane.
Is this likely going to turn into a court battle?
Yeah, I don't know. Frankly, I just don't know. It depends on what happens on Friday if it gets passed and approved.
Our major concern was whether the new new crib is not going to be accounted for, and we were assured that that's not the case.
They will still appraise new construction and then permitting construction. One thing I can tell you is that we have not previously sent permits to TAD for them to monitor and make sure that those properties that have major renovations are approved. We have that process set up, at least that much.
In the last three years. Thank you for assisting small cities.
Well, I just, again, so my opinion is, is that I don't care how often you appraise if you're looking to reform the way that appraisals are done. Doesn't matter how often you do it.
Right.
It matters on the format in which you do it.
Yes.
And they're not changing the format in which they're doing it. They're just pushing it back. And so I'm really fearful for residents, and I'm concerned on how that's going to impact them. I think they're going to see two years of flat tax bills, and then they're going to get hit with a large increase all at once. At the same time, I think it's going to keep city revenue flat for two years. And then we'll likely see a big increase in 2027 when that changes. But that's going to be very difficult for us to forecast.
Well, color hatred will be tied too, because we're going to limit how much we can come in.
I think, well, I think unfortunately, that may have an adverse impact on us trying to get below and reach our goal. Because if they're going to be flats, then essentially we would be having to adopt something close or below the no new revenue rate. Because I would imagine tax rate calculations will come in pretty similar, depending on what new construction does, but we'll see what happens there.
This is going to have a negative impact on our general fund.
Yes. Yeah, so this is directly impacting general fund, yes.
Yes, ma'am. I'm unhappy with some bonuses.
Is everybody comfortable with the 1.026080? Any discussion there, any possible changes to that?
No.
That is good.
I mean, his point was to raise, right?
I just want to make sure if we were going to go any lower, then we would need to go back to the drawing board and figure this out. But I wanted to make sure we had a pretty good consensus here from council.
This means we're going to have to use our mechanical pencils longer.
Okay. So if you flip over to the next page, average household taxable value comparison, we did see a pretty decent jump, I guess, for the single-family residents, not as much as we anticipated with the new residential development. But it's also important to keep in mind that not all those homes have been appraised yet because they do appraisals as of January 1. So only the homes that would have been built in January 1, the new subdivision that we counted, January 1 this next year, we may see a pretty big spike in that's single-family residence median value after they do the valuations for new construction. But that's up to 163,000. Calculation here, increase in dollars in tax impact will be 120... calculation here, uh, increase in dollars in tax impact will be a hundred and twenty-six dollars each year to the resident.
A hundred and twenty-six dollars a year?
Yes. Your house, average, yes.
Ooh, that's for ten houses, that's twelve hundred and sixty bucks, where are we going to spend that? Sorry.
That's okay.
My sarcasm is a little running high.
No more cruises for you.
No more cruises for me, it's okay with me.
And again, some house values go up, some house values go down, this is based on mediums, this is the averaging pattern. Next page, page six, just a glossary of terms, so I'm not going to go over any of these on page.
No, it's, it's, it's good for looking back at all the different tax, these are strictly tax terminology. You know, we don't look at these every day, so it's, it's good to review them. But also specifically this year, this unused increment rate, um, just so you guys can understand that a little bit, so. Before we move on to revenues, I'm just going to give you, we're not, I'm not going to go over this line by line, but I gave a copy of the tax rate calculation worksheet. So it shows kind of how, how we came up. Oh, I forgot one here. Okay.
Okay, thanks sir. All right, so we're on page eleven now under revenues. This is revenue summary by funds, so this page will just break it out by all the funds for you. General fund and then special funds as well as water, sewer, and debt. Let's go over to page thirteen, we'll jump right into the general fund revenue summary. So overall revenue for the general fund will be ninety-nine point two million for fiscal year twenty-two. This is broken out by property tax, franchise tax, other taxes, um, which that may include like liquor sales tag, uh, I'm sorry, liquor.
Mix it.
Yeah, mixed beverage tags, those things. Permits and fees, administrative transfers, which administrative transfers are transfers that we do for our special revenue funds over to cover expenses associated with those funds. Fines, warrants, um, other revenue, intergovernmental revenue, which you're seeing a big spike there as compared to, as compared to many prior years, because we've got some increases within SRO, a couple of others. Dispatches included in there as well. And then equity change of eighteen thousand two ninety-nine, so that's, that's the cushion that we have for this next year. Which is better than ten thousand, if you recall last year.
Yes, I recall.
Not by much.
We just probably spent that in our first four weeks of the season.
He texted last night, he said, you kind of general fund balance, I'm like, barely sir, barely.
All right, page fourteen, we'll dive into the revenue summaries and we can, you can ask questions as we go through this. Property taxes, so the property tax revenue includes current delinquent and penalty and interest, delinquent is always a guess. And, and we're, we're, we have to base that pretty much off of historical data. So that's where those numbers come from. Our total property tax revenue for the years anticipated to be two point nine dollars.
For general fund?
Yeah, for general fund. Sales tax, uh, we did budget an increase there. We are anticipating to see a good impact on sales tax, particularly with some of the new businesses and things coming in. So I anticipate that we should meet or exceed that budget. Mixed beverage, this is a fairly conservative number. With us adding another liquor store, we may see that increase. But mixed beverage sales taxes is kind of unique and different, so we're just keeping that note conservative, it's not a big number. Franchise checks, that just, that's based off the franchise agreements, which we will bring back to you. We do have to execute a new franchise agreement with Encore before the end of the year. City attorney's office is reviewing that agreement right now to bring back recommendations for y'all to consider with Encore. But those are pretty much my franchise, or franchise agreements. Permits and fees, I'll let you just kind of scroll down and see if you have any questions or anything that pops out at you. Notable changes, building permit fees, this is one of the things that is kind of, I don't want to say negatively impacted, but it's been one of the challenges this year with the budget, is last year and even the year before, we received some pretty extraordinary revenues within building permit fees because of Hannah Ranch subdivision.
Now, different type of permits were increased significantly the last two years and then now all of a sudden, phew, it's going to drop, it's going to, yeah, so.
So we are budgeting twenty-five thousand dollars, I still think that's a little conservative, but that's, we don't want, we want to maintain conservative numbers. Same impact is going to happen to contractor licensing, electrical permits as well, and plumbing permits. So we're seeing all of those reduce pretty dramatically this year with the subdivision coming to fruition. We did increase animal adoption fees slightly, I say slightly, three hundred percent, but only, only by six thousand dollars. We're expecting to, to meet that. Civic center fees were, were increasing as well. We've already exceeded budget for this year, we've, we're at over fifty thousand dollars. So far this year.
That's excellent.
Yes.
Let's consult plan, review fees.
That's a pass-through fee, sometimes when we have a big development, like a commercial development, if we have to have the engineer review that plan rather than your Veritas, then we would collect that fee, it's a pass-through fee, we would charge that fee to the person doing the building. And so it would reflect as a revenue here and then it would cover the professional service expense that goes out, uh, if my money. But we don't typically budget for those because we, we don't know when somebody's going to submit something that, that'll require a special review. Sanitation fees, so the revenue there is going to go up, but also the expenditure is going to also go up because if you recall, uh, we had an eight percent increase in trash sanitation this past year. So that's, that's reflective of both an eight percent increase and an increase in number of accounts.
Is it eight? I thought it was six.
Over, I think the total increase was eight.
I don't know why, I was thinking it was six percentage.
Trash and recycling, I think, I think the total was eight. If I remember right.
When is that contract due or, when you?
There's still, yeah, there's still, I think another year. Any questions on permits and fees section?
Security line fees, are people actually doing that?
Yes.
Yes.
I did.
I was going to say, there's a few in this room, I've seen the checks.
Yes, we are.
Any other questions, permits and fees? Okay, administrative transfers in, so there's a, there's a big change here, two reasons. One, water increased a little bit. The other one is because of a change in how debt service was being collected and, and calculated with the tax rate. It's, it's nothing to be concerned about, it's just the way that the accounting is done as soon as it's in.
Right now?
No.
No, our debt service didn't go down, it's just, we were collecting water debt service essentially within general fund. And so she's, she's balancing that out to keep water in water, in general fund and general.
Okay, so you're splitting it out, yes, okay.
Page fifteen, fines and warrants. These are primarily controlled based off the, uh, number of citations that are written. Certain, certain portions of those fines collected have to go into certain funds that are built out and ordered by the state. So that's what each one of these funds are.
Some are restricted and some are not. I didn't know it's restricted, oh, is that what the top one says?
Yeah, well, yes.
That's not restricted, okay.
Yeah.
No, it's not.
It really, it really is hard to know.
They're restricted, yeah, that's more for me to know, okay. If we choose to use any of that money, we have to, it has to come through our council. There's specific purposes for this.
Okay, moving on to other revenue. Slide increase in ambulance fees as we see an increase in service, cost per service for a fire department. We expect that to continue with the continued developments. We don't budget typically for most donations, unless we know ahead of time that we're going to get a donation. So those are all showing a zero, although we may actually see donations that, that hit those accounts.
Where do donations for the Christmas things, those kinds of things? Uh, special event donations?
I don't think it's, I don't think that one, that account's listed on this page, but it would.
Yeah, it is.
It's on under.
Oh yeah, there it is.
I'm looking for, I'm looking for. I'm going to order, sorry. It's by account number, sorry.
One big change, I'm thinking on this one is fire billing, so we have previously been, uh, budgeting kind of high for fire billing, but we haven't really seen the numbers that meet that. Again, we want to be conservative with our budgeting for revenues, so we just zeroed that out if we collect anything, great. But we're not going to rely on collecting anything from fire billing.
Because it's, it's sporadic and it's generally like if there's a house fire and then the insurance company, you know, pays us or something. So, you know, uh, in twenty-three, we received thirteen thousand dollars, but it's not typical. And so, yeah, last year we had budgeted ten thousand and I said, ah, I'm going to take that out because we're not necessarily going to see it. I don't want to count on money that we don't actually have, so we can't guarantee, so.
And then the grant revenues down below. We have a hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars left in American Rescue Plan funds, which we would use to offset any municipal purpose. That's not a lot of money left and it has to be expended in this budget.
We're, we're not allocating it at this point, we're just accounting for it, that we will be using that hundred ninety-nine thousand because we have to. So I, I've put it in here, but it doesn't mean we've allocated it to something specific.
Grant revenue from the ESD and then grant revenue for county ARCA funds, and county ARCA funds, Wausau, and ambulance expenditure for this next year. When they're moving by another.
And the hundred fifty thousand is for fire PPE protected here.
Any questions there? Page sixteen, intergovernmental revenue, county runs EMS. We're budgeting a slide increase there as well as a slide increase on county runs fire, but I can tell you, we don't know for sure what that contract's going to look like. We're just anticipating somewhat of an increase, so it's a conservative increase. We are hopeful that the ESD will give us a larger bump than what we're budgeting for. But as, as I think we've explained before, the ESD has had significant turnover. It is a completely new board. They have now a new sales tax revenue that is impacting them, they're trying to figure out how to spend a sales tax revenue that's going to generate more than twelve million dollars a year. That they're trying to figure out how to allocate to the departments, it's supposed to help out with personnel. We still don't know how that's going to impact us.
That'll be a separate revenue line item once we get notified of how much we will get in the final, yeah.
So with all that kind of in the air, we're being pretty conservative with our anticipated increases. That may change and it may change in the coming weeks. If it's, if it changes before our budget's adopted, we'll try to include that in the adopted budget. But I think they're looking to meet on.
They always do it after our budget's done, it's like.
I think they're looking to meet next Tuesday, uh, which won't give us much time, we'll try to, we'll try to figure that out.
And we all have to go, huh? This isn't here, but.
ISD revenue's up by five percent, we did propose a five percent increase on a contract for school resource officers and they accepted. That'll actually come to you, they've already approved their side of the agreement, we just need to approve ours, that's coming at the next council meeting. And then the hundred fifty thousand dollars we, we proposed to the city of four still seventy-five thousand dollar increase. They obviously have not finalized their budget, but it's my understanding that's included in their budget and it sounds like it's supported by their council. So we're not just spending a hundred fifty thousand dollars next year for animal patrol services. And then of course, TCRC dispatch, um, it's up by eleven percent, uh, over prior year, a couple of reasons for that. One, we did ask the ESD for an eight percent increase because we asked them for a five percent last year and they denied us. So we asked them for an eight point five percent this year and we're pretty, we're pretty confident, I'm told, that, that shouldn't be a problem for them. So they're getting an eight point five percent increase. Many other departments have been asked to partake in a five percent increase over prior year and they've all accepted that. And then we have one additional, uh, department, uh, above what was budgeted last year as well, which is Blue Mountain PD.
That's not clear.
And the one point one, yes it is, that number I gave you.
I think, I think we got that, we didn't get the final approval until I would. So that, that number might go up slightly.
We've got a couple, yeah, we've got a couple of other departments. Three other departments that are looking at us right now.
Yeah, that's great.
And then of course, the equity change, so we have an eighteen thousand dollar cushion. To balance.
And, and honestly, it, it should be more than that because the, the property tax numbers are preliminary and it generally comes in slightly higher.
Any questions there? We'll go over to special revenue funds, special revenue funds revenue. Page eighteen is the T-Cold Special Revenue Fund, this amount is set by T-Cold, depending upon the number of officers we have in the department. It is paid out for law enforcement training each year, um, so we have no say in that, so that's, that's just a set figure. Page nineteen is economic development. This is a sales tax, so depending upon how our sales tax is, we're anticipating, sales tax revenue to be two hundred seventy-five thousand and then an interest of fifteen thousand, uh, budgeted increase, uh, decrease fund balance. So we are anticipating to pull ninety-eight thousand dollars from reserves. If the EDC also approves, this would be for the stage that's going to be built out here and some of the extra stuff.
So you say general fund?
No, this is special revenue.
This is, this is. Okay, so, oh, thank you, that, I needed those three letters, I'm here.
Yep.
And they're part, okay.
Yes. All right, page twenty, here's a big one I like. anticipating the TIF fund to increase by three hundred sixty thousand this next year. That includes our portion as well as the, uh, county and hospital districts. And that is controlled through, this revenue is generated through the property tax. So that may actually come in a little bit higher if property tax comes in higher than obviously the, the, the same impact should reflect on TIF as well. Especially with the big new development.
It's us, the county and the hospital district?
Yes. Questions there? All right, street improvement sales tax, we're expecting that impact to be a hundred thirty-two thousand with about eleven thousand in interest. We're not budgeting for any grant revenue from the county, we have not budgeted for any major street projects this year. So, uh, the majority of that will actually be.
Right to reserve.
Go into reserves, street fund reserves. The only amount that's coming out of street fund is going to be admin transfer portion.
So we're looking at thirty-seven thousand dollars?
No, so. No, that's what's, that's what's going to go to ad, uh, admin budget. I'm sorry, that's what's going to go to general fund, the hundred and five thousand will go to reserves. Is that backwards?
No, that's, no, that's my formula, it's jacked up right there.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, what?
Hundred, hundred and five thousand will go to reserves.
Reserves, okay.
Yes ma'am. On record, yeah, no, your formula's.
Yeah, no, 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 no. Don't forget saying yeah and no.
Hundred and five thousand will go to street fund reserves.
Yes, okay.
Thirty-seven thousand will be going. Thirty-seven thousand will be going to the general fund as a part of the admin.
I have a mental step back there. Okay, so it shows thirty-seven thousand because the ba- the budget has to be balanced. And so the expenditure side, we have, the street improvement fund has expenditures of thirty-seven thousand for the year. So that's why it's showing here, so that it's even. But the additional, uh, the amount coming in above that, like he said, is a hundred and five thousand and that will go to reserves. Okay, yeah.
Just the parentheses, okay, I know. All right.
And if it's in parentheses, it's good.
It's good?
Yes.
Okay.
On revenues, yes?
On revenues, yes.
Yeah, for me, I hate it.
That's why I put it over here, so he's getting it.
Four basic functions and simple interest, that's a spark, my brain goes. Okay.
All right, flipping over to page twenty-two, which is crime control district. Hundred and twenty-five thousand is anticipated revenue with three hundred fifty for interest. We will be contributing twenty-one thousand to reserves. So we have an overage and expecting a hundred and four of that to go to, to uh general fund. Uh, essentially the crime control district's sales tax pays primarily for just the police vehicles.
Yes, yes, yes.
Next page is debt service fund, so this is the, just the debt service portion of the property tax that's collected.
The general fund debt.
Yes, I'm sorry, general fund.
Just to, just to clarify.
Questions there? So we move over to page twenty-five. Water sewer fund. So historically, water sewer fund has been pretty good. Um, reserve balances are, are looking decent. Um, but I will tell you this year, this one is squeaking by a little bit tighter than it has. Um, that's due to a couple of different things, one, an increase in admin transfers. Because of vehicle costs and other things that have just gone up. And then two, converting um the part-time administrative assistant position to a full-time position. So both those have had um some impacts um on this budget. On the budget, so we're, we're squeaking by on this one.
And, and.
But very good.
And losing the impact fees.
Oh, yes.
Uh, that's, that's significant, because that was one point two million this year that we lost in that we brought in this year, but we won't be bringing in next year because it was all from the new neighborhood.
Oh, I try to check out.
What position's going for part-time, full-time?
Evelyn.
Evelyn, the, the, oh, the uh, okay. Administrative assistant.
Is that a big one?
When we were gone for twelve days, came home and the car was running.
Oh, God.
And it ran the whole way. Forgot a two hundred sixty dollar water bill.
That hurts. Oh, I hate that. People don't realize how, how much that affects your water.
I will tell you that um, I think we are budgeting a little conservatively on water fees. It is very hard to anticipate what water fees are going to look like. Uh, when you've got two hundred two new homes and new commercial properties that are coming in. So I think the number is a, a little conservative still. Uh, but again, we want to stay conservative, uh, that might, that may come in above. Um, sewer fees, uh, those are pretty much, I mean, it's pretty much a wash because we need to pay that out for sewer treatment to the city of Fort Worth. Definitely fees, other revenue, um, other revenue, they include, well, let's just flip over to page twenty-six. Sorry. It's been a long day, meetings. Other revenue. So other revenue can include the property registration fees, interest, insufficient check funds, those kinds of things. Um, and we're squeaking by with thirty-nine thousand dollars in excess, so thirty-nine thousand dollars this year for water sewer. Still sitting better than the general fund, but not by much this year. Any questions on water and sewer?
Thank you, thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
All right, so. Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, okay, what's the other part?
So Susan has worked very hard because um, we started this process and, you know, the original calculations. So as we go through, we have to kind of go through and make sure we're not overlooking anything. So some, some of the corrections were, were made by, because we were looking, we started this and I think it was close to a half million dollar deficit. And, and so we had to.
One point six.
Oh, one point six, okay. One point six million dollar deficit, so we had to go through and identify, okay, what did we miss? Were we, so identifying missed revenues, animal control was one, hey, this wasn't in the budget, so we forgot to include that. So having to go through and rework all those things, um, and then having to cut several things within the budget as well. Um, some of the things that we cut, um, included the um carpeting at city hall and renovations at city hall. So we did cut that out of the budget. Uh, carpeting and dispatch and some renovations in dispatch, we cut that out. Um, we had to reduce several line items within the budgets. Contingency fund was dropped from, I think we were anticipating forty?
Thirty, went down to twenty.
Yeah, thirty. So in the city manager budget, we have a contingency fund, we started at twenty, we upped it to twenty-five this year, frozen up to thirty. Budget constraints, we're dropping that back down to twenty. There are professional services, that was a correction in professional services, so we were able to reduce that one. Um, we had to, we removed the um special events. We budgeted ten thousand dollars for Celebrate America next year. Uh, we zeroed that out, that has been removed. Uh, we budgeted, I think, ten thousand dollars also in Mindy's budget for Christmas, we reduced that to five thousand dollars. Um, so we're, for both those events, we're going to have to work a little harder on getting sponsorships to, to cover those expenses. Uh, we just won't have that cushion that we got owed for this year, which isn't a huge deal. We didn't have a cushion last year or the year before, um, we were just hoping to do a little better this year for our events.
And how much is that stage going to cost?
We have budgeted seventy-five thousand under E D C capital. But it hasn't been approved on the, on that side yet, but that's.
I'm just wondering, is that something that has to be done?
Well, that's, so that's going to come out of E D C funds, that won't, that won't touch general fund, we're talking about general fund.
Yeah, I know. But I'm thinking, I think they need a stage.
You think so?
I think so, Jim, but you said it was twenty-five hundred to rent one each time?
Yes. Yeah, every time we rent that stage converter, it's twenty-five hundred.
So we could have more events if we had something. That would bring a little bit.
Well, that should generate more funds for this building.
Cause it can be used.
For weddings and things like that.
They can rent it at the same.
Cool.
So.
So we need to add.
But we still need E D C to, to talk about it first.
So we should, if it gets passed, we need to have the stage to the civic center. Paperwork.
Yes, correct. As far, as far as a rental, yeah.
Um, several other little odds and ends changes, and like I said, if you, I guess we need to decide if you would like, um, because I don't want to get too deep into expenditures, you're not supposed to at this meeting. Um, but if you would like, we can set up a budget workshop just prior to the council meeting next week to review the change, all the changes in, in the expenditure budget. Um, I will tell you, we did not change anything related to personnel. So the two additional firefighters were kept in there in the budget for the fire department, which would change staffing from nine to eleven. Um, we also kept all the full-time transitions for the employees that are going from part-time to full-time. And a three, three percent cost of living increase. Across the board.
Just don't let it touch that.
Yeah.
Did animal control get affected?
No, cause I, I, I was not going to walk into this meeting and get my head cut off today. So no changes on animal control budget.
No, we didn't, we didn't take away the, the trailer money, we didn't take away any of that, that counts. Any of the things that we felt that you guys were pretty adamant on, that you really were.
So I, I bet you we should, we should do another.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Revenue.
Absolutely.
There's some pretty, there's some pretty significant changes and I just, I can't remember all of them sitting in here and we weren't prepared to come in here with a full list of all the changes, but we can build that and we could schedule a, a quick workshop before the council.
I was going to say, won't take too long.
I'm here at five anyway.
Let's plan on doing that, just, okay, so we, we're all educated before we pass the budget.
Oh, we did also, this, this one you won't like, we did also reduce, originally we had talked about budgeting for parks, forty thousand dollars for capital, uh, capital expenditures in parks, we did reduce that down to thirty thousand dollars. So there was, there was a ten thousand dollar cut there. Um, and we're going to try to.
But either way, we were gonna, we were going out for grants anyway, so it was not, yeah.
Well, hopefully we can get that federal money and it can kind of be a moot point anyway, you know? Since it, it has earmarked for that park already, so.
Okay, I'd like that little budget workshop before our next meeting. Kind of go over. Expenditures. And the cuts.
And as this week progresses and, and maybe we'll know on Tuesday too, if there's any changes as far as like fire calculations, you know, a couple of those changes, last minute changes, we're waiting to see. Um, so this will also give us a little extra opportunity to kind of uh fine tune some things. Look back to you, but um, that's the, that's the gist, we do have to make several cuts, several changes.
I have a budget live job just before next um council, so they can tell us about all the cuts.
On Tuesday?
Well, I'm sorry, what? Said I'm supposed to, so changes, yeah, um, I was just letting you know that based on the calendar, I'm supposed to distribute the budget books on Tuesday. So now something.
Is that carbon stoned somewhere?
Yes, it is, in effect, you have to have it for a whole, before we have the hearing. And the hearing is, is the next week.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, well, my only concern is if we're having a meeting on Tuesday, and I'm happy to go over any of the expenditures or any of the changes that we've made, but we'll be basically, I'm presenting the, the budget book, so we won't really be making changes to that. It, it'll just be an awareness type of meeting.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what council.
We only have so much money.
I mean, it is what it is, exactly.
You guys are hanging off the bounce, but we're not going to come here.
Basically, yes, then it's fine, we can, yeah, I can hand out the budget books and we can turn to the expenditures and we can go over all of that.
Yeah.
Line by line, discuss the changes.
Yeah, don't, yeah.
I think we're good.
It is what it is, at some point you need to stop moving.
Exactly, well, I think we probably are, y'all are just going to show us what you, yeah, chop, chop, just what I'm saying.
Trying to think if there's any other major cuts that could be imperative to them to be aware of.
We've just trimmed the budget anywhere we possibly could if we said, okay, this training budget was slightly too high, we didn't use that much this year. Trim it, trim it, trim it, like, yeah, that's, I just kind of had it, whittle away at it to get it close enough to, to balance.
Rolling pains. So I guess that's a good thing, we've got a lot happening here, so.
Okay, I've actually got your spreadsheet still yesterday, so if you'll bear with me, let me just go through it real quick. Not, not with your changes, but I've got the budget in there, so I can, I can review and make sure. So um, okay, so legal services within city manager budget, legal services were reduced by five thousand. Not expected to less than, that's not a problem. Contingency reserve, we dropped down to twenty thousand. And then professional services is at twenty-five thousand. We originally, when we sent you the numbers, we budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, but we will not spend that because a lot of that expenditure was due to, we were veritas doing the inspections for Anna Ranch, so we were able to reduce that.
So it should have been reduced anywhere.
Um, other budget cuts, finance, I don't think we had any finance, correct? Nope. Human resources. City secretary, the only change in the city secretary was that public event line item, we dropped it from ten thousand to five thousand for Christmas. Um, but again, we, we didn't have ten thousand last year or any years before that, so we'll, we'll still make it work. No changes on city council budget. Parks budget, the biggest change was when we originally proposed it, we proposed forty thousand dollars for capital expenditures and we're reducing that to thirty thousand for this year. No other changes in parks budget. Public works. No changes here, no. Just a correction, I think we made a correction on the utility sanitation, but that's in there.
Yeah.
That's the only change there, it was a correction based on calculation. Um, fire, we reduced or we removed entirely the public event line item, that was originally ten thousand, so we removed that altogether. Dispatch, we dropped, she originally had twenty-five thousand dollars in capital expenditures, we chunked that out, was paying for carpet. Um, we've dropped that down to five thousand. And we'll just go no carpet this year. No changes on animal control, we didn't touch animal control. Changes in court.
There was, there was. There was no change to the personnel, like he said, there was no change to the T M R S change that we had discussed going from five percent to six percent. And that as is. And then.
That's, that's pretty much all the changes, I mean, the changes in what was originally proposed to us, other than just some calculation corrections or balances.
And you don't want the health insurance.
Oh, that was another significant change, yes, we did.
Good call.
Yeah, um, we did, originally we had um budgeted for a ten percent increase, so that got slashed. So it's now staying the same as what it was last year because, well, we came back with zero.
Yeah, so, yeah, originally the U H C was proposing a pretty big increase.
That's significant, yeah.
Um, Blue Cross Blue Shield actually came in with a decrease, a small decrease for us. And so that gave us some pretty good negotiating power against United Healthcare, because I will tell you, the majority of the employees prefer United Healthcare over Blue Cross Blue Shield, because we have a good number of employees that have dependent coverage under United Healthcare. And Cook's Children's and many of the facilities around here are under United Healthcare, but not offered underneath Blue Cross Blue Shield. So the, the, many of the employees prefer United Healthcare, so it gave us some good negotiating power. Um, and he went back to U H C with those numbers and they came back at, at a zero percent increase. Now, there will be some fluctuation within the premiums, but again, for budgetary purposes, it's not going to impact the thousand, or is it eleven hundred?
Yeah.
Thousand, a thousand dollars per.
Yay.
So no increase there this year. Knock on wood, that is four years now in a row that we've had really good renewals, let's hope we can keep that up.
Yeah. So.
So, um, we lucked out there. We really did.
Yeah, that was a significant change. Reduce that amount quite a bit.
Anything else?
No.
So we'll bring you a finalized budget book next week, we'll review those changes. Oh, yeah, a, yeah, proposed budget next week, the full budget book next week. And we'll do that as a part of the regular meeting, credits.
Yeah. So it's going to be a short meeting then?
Yeah, we have, we have several other agenda items, I've got a good time. I'm sorry.
When is the apartments back on the agenda?
Um, I think we still have another month.
I said they're supposed to contact you, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah. I think so, are we, any other, good, any other questions on budget?
You did good, yeah.
Really, seriously, she's been here till midnight, like all week this week. And Saturdays and Sundays. And Fridays.
All right, well, if anyone else has anything, I will adjourn the meeting this six.